We call the August 8, 2018 work session of the town board to order at 7:01 PM. We'll let the minutes reflect that we have three board members tonight. Councilwoman Metzler and Councilman Quinn are out this evening. We have the minutes of July 25, 2018 before us and would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
Are those minutes be approved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, those in favor, aye. Opposed, those minutes are approved. Thank you, Lisa, as always. We do not have any monthly reports. All of them are in. We're waiting for the next cycle to start. They've just started to come in, so we'll update the board at our next meeting. We have no public hearings this evening and we have one guest, so we've got the Kennedy brother, not the Kennedy brothers, tonight. So Kyle has joined us tonight and this is to discuss outdoor music event at K-2 Brewing. And I'll ask Mr. Costello to further tee that up.
Well, you did a pretty good job, Mr. Supervisor. I think the event is proposed with the board's permission, proposed the other 19th of August, is that correct?
Uh huh.
Okay. All right, why don't you tell the board a little bit about the process of what you're trying to accomplish there?
We're hoping for, we had added a beer garden on to our property. I brought some pictures of, various pictures of the garden if you'd like to look through.
I gave the board a drawing showing where this is in relationship to the neighbors.
We had written a letter of intent to request for permission for outdoor entertainment and was, we're hoping to go through the proper channels and steps to get the approval through the town board. In the photos I had shown, we had added on the beer garden. We have nine picnic tables. When we went through the initial approval, we had talked about what we were going to do. We didn't actually get, we had the fence up when we had done the initial meeting. Since then, this spring, we're able to dump a lot of money into it and pour everything. When we had our Calgary guy pour the stage, he had poured it and we cut out into the hill like it's an amphitheater a little bit to have the stage ran electric out there. And it shows pictures that it's aimed right at the building. And down on the last page, you can see, we did an aerial map, showing our nearest residential neighbors about 1,000 feet away, up over the hill. It's fenced in. We're, we have no intentions of doing any large rock bands, anything. Our goal is to do always, you know, acoustic, to keep easy listening for patrons to enjoy within, in the fence. We've done decibel readings outside the fence by the road and everything's roughly around 100 decibels as that road goes by. We have no intentions of even going close to that. It'd be well underneath that decibel. And we'd like to keep, you know, we'd always keep it under 10:00 PM or before 10:00 PM to keep inside sound ordinances and keep everything early enough to where we can have people exit because we are never open past midnight on Fridays and Saturdays when we'd like to have music and we'd want to keep it before that time.
So the hours would actually be?
For entertainment, it'd be 7:00 to 10:00.
7:00 to 10:00. And again, the nights that you're proposing, all nights or just Friday, Saturday?
It'd be, for this one, I believe it's for this, Jim, it's for the 19th?
Yeah.
Yes.
So just for everybody's information, he's talking to you, telling you about the 19th person?
Yeah, I was going to say just.
For a special, for a special permit.
But he did recently, that's right. But he did recently make an application, which we'll be hearing sometime, I believe, in September.
So I think it's on, it's on the agenda for next meeting.
That's right.
To set the public hearing.
That's right. So that is to have an ongoing process. We thought we would do this first with you to make sure you're comfortable before we move forward.
So what kind of music, I mean, are you talking about acoustic? Are you talking about people singing? What are you thinking?
Fully acoustic. I prefer to keep it that way, keep it small. It's more for enjoyment for our patrons. I never charge a cover. I never, you know, have bands that are too large. It's more for just entertainment. There's plenty of other places that can have rock bands and I like to keep my bathrooms clean, my place looking nice and.
You've had bands in your facility?
Yes, inside. We have, yeah, we have them indoors. It's always acoustic and we always have, if you ever been in there, right by, actually where we did the ribbon cutting.
That's where they set up?
Yep, that's where they set up and we do them usually, depends weekly. It's always Saturday nights, weekly to monthly, depending on when we can get access.
There is amplification though, some stories, isn't there?
I'm sorry?
There's some type of amplification proposed for it. When you say acoustic, usually acoustic means there's no amplification.
No plug-in?
But I think your intent is?
Oh, plug-in. Very little amplification. I mean, I'm not, it's still acoustic as in like acoustic guitars, it's not electric guitars. I've never, I've never, I never have any intention of having a full drum set or, you know, it's going to be, I mean, the first, I've had is like a djembe or a cajon or the wooden drums that they sit on, you know, inside. What would be inside would be no more than I'd want outside. And biggest reason is, right now, on a nice day, we will have, you know, 50, 60 people outside and 10 people inside.
Right.
So it kind of defeats the purpose of having live music inside when nobody's inside because they're enjoying the outdoor beer garden.
Yeah. The only thing, I think I'd be okay for trying it out for the acoustic, but, you know, that would be a barometer because, see the temperature of the neighborhood because, you know, back in the day when the, where Basil's is, where Mara's kitchen is now, and that was, that was Bounty and then it was, I can't remember the name, but they had Bay Fest and they would have bands out there, you know? And my parents lived up on Parkview, which is up a hill, you know, from where you are. And we sit in the big garden, you could hear it as clear as day, you know? I mean, it was that far away, but the sound carries up. And that'd be the biggest fear is the neighbors that are just above you over there and into Parkview that they, you know, they might be challenged to hear it all the time. Like somebody at a party maybe that never stops for, from 7:00 to 10:00 or something.
Yeah, we'll never have a band loud enough that they should hear that far away. I promise you, we never will. And on this date, I'd gladly, you know, have someone or I could even take the decibel readings during it to show, you know, that we would never, you know, never be loud enough to hear far away, do it all around within distances and, you know, majority of the time the road noise is louder than, you know, anything else.
Yeah. I don't know. So I guess on my mind, I would support an approval for this for the 19th acoustic only, no plug-in, see how it goes, you know? And then you come back in September if it didn't work out because the neighbors are all around.
I agree.
Then we'll know that you have to do something different.
I 100% agree.
Yeah, I am fine with moving ahead on this particular date. You know, acoustical, you know, is not electronic music. As I said, no plug-ins, it sounds like that's okay with you.
Yeah, like amplified would be simply like they would have, it'd be one speaker to beware that can be heard but not beyond our, our interior property.
And I think we need, just need to flush that out a little bit, Jim, on it so there's no misunderstanding.
Right.
And I figure you're facing it towards either the building or towards the bay, right?
It faces directly towards the building.
Right.
And there's the fence that goes all the way around the property.
I mean, we've done this before for other restaurants, you know, for special events. I think the fact that you're ending at 10:00 PM is good, not going any later than that. And then I would, assuming this passes tonight, moving forward, I would just encourage you maybe at some point when this is going on to go up to that neighborhood, you know, and see if you can hear it or see what type of sound you can get from that. But I think one night is fine under these parameters. I trust Jim will work out the language appropriately so there's no gray area there, there's no misunderstanding for the August 19 date. So I'm okay moving forward.
So I move that we move forward.
Okay, so motion to, to allow the 19th to happen. Use that as a trial, trial balloon for a public hearing that will come up in September.
True.
Is there a second to that?
Yes.
Okay, so moved and seconded. And then, Jim, I think, you know, as we take a look, similar to what we've done at a number of locations for the special events, I'm thinking about Chacha's, which is now Joe Gaps. I think about the Jeremiah's. We had some specific already in there for, you know, for that prior to them going for music on a more regular basis, that they had a special permit and some criteria for that. And so we'll include that as part of that letter that we give back to the applicant.
Very good.
Okay. Other questions, discussions by the board? Questions or comments additional that you'd like to add to the record that had not already been added to the record?
No, sir.
All right. Very good. Then those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. So approval to run the event on the 19th and then we'll see how that goes and we'll look forward to seeing you at the public hearing in September.
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your time. That brings us on to action items and the first action we have is Mary Wynn's special permit at 2567 Browncroft Boulevard. And with that, Mr. Costello, anything new different that you've received since our last get-together?
No.
Okay. So let's, let me just take a minute and kind of recap a little bit where we are so that we have that for the record. This matter was before the board on June 6th for a public hearing. The board asked to have that table. That proposal that was, that came in was for 12 units at the request of the board. Staff had done a little bit of legwork. We date back to February 7th of 1964. This is a letter that came from the town of Penfield to Mrs. Eleanor Ludwig, who was the property owner at the time. And the zoning board of appeals on January 12th of 1960 had a variance for that property from a single dwelling to a three-family dwelling. Alteration was completed and was approved according to the regulations at that time. Such use therefore is permitted and allowed to continue under the variance and within the regulations which apply to multiple dwellings. That was in 1964. And then in 1987, the Forrester, the Forrester family received a letter from the town and essentially talked about the use of that and confirmed again that the property could be sold or appraised as a three-family residence. And for your records, the assessor's office has updated the information consistent with the approvals that were given back in 1964. The applicant has come in for, looking to propose 12 units for that area. I think the board, some of the board's discussion was that appeared to be a little bit excessive. So I think we have at least brought things up to where we, where we are at this point as a little bit of a recap. Applicant is with us tonight and I would ask, Mr. Costello, you do not have anything additional to add into the record? Ask the applicant anything additional that you would like to add into the record at this time?
Yes, I would like to add that since I purchased the home, I made it historical landmark. I went through the effort of doing that. And we brought the Landmark Society from Rochester and the state of Albany and watched the home. And it was recommended that I restore the white house, which had been used as an outhouse. And for those of you who walked through the building, you probably recall that it was not living space when it was a three-family. But I put a new foundation in because the lie had destroyed the cobblestone foundation and rebuilt the house at great expense and re-roofed it at great expense, which gave the red brick house more square footage and does not really have any physical attachment to the house except that it is physically attached to the outside of the house and had a small opening. So I would request that I be allowed to make that a one-bedroom apartment since it is really a separate structure and doesn't connect to the house in a way that it could be utilized as part of the three-family that the Ludwigs had and the Forresters had.
And the Forresters had.
And it does have two entrances. Of the seven entrances of the red house, it has two entrances into the same room. So that's all I would request is that I be allowed to make that a one-bedroom apartment.
Okay. All right. Board, discussion, comments?
I'm trying to figure that out. So it wasn't used for living space, the white part at all?
No. It was the entrance to the basement. So when they, so the house, the red house is three parts. And then the white house was an addition. And I have in the historical notes that there was an employee who was allowed to live in that back part and it was used as a kitchen and a bathroom for him. And then, I don't know if you recall, in the red house, the part that was kind of like a stable part, had that big, great brick thing, that was their outhouse. So they had their outhouse and he had his, and he had his cooking facility there. And a basement was dug underneath that white house and there was an entrance to that white house.
Did this all happen in the 60s?
No, this happened in the 1800s.
1800s?
Right. So that white house was never really used for anything except they took plywood and they covered up the cobblestone foundation where the outhouse was. And there was a screen door. I mean, I don't know, they may have used it as, I don't know what, I don't know what they used it for. It didn't have real windows, it didn't. But when I, when the Landmark Society came through, they recommended that I rebuild that. They were very interested in that. So I, not knowing that I would not get approval for this, I rebuilt it. And that was, and I have a building permit for that.
Right.
And we did structural drawings for that. Right. And that is, in the drawings here, it is an apartment. It has, it has a porch. It's not part of the house. I mean, it's, so it lends itself to a small one-bedroom apartment. It's a beautiful little one-bedroom apartment. And then this, I will figure out a way to make it work for three additional families, which is what the Ludwigs had, which is what the Forresters had. But this isn't really connected to the, I mean, and I spent a lot of money on it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a strange little addition there that nobody ever got approval for, it just was there in the 1800s, but.
Well, I'm not really sure what the approval process was for renovations in the 1800s.
But no, I mean, in the 40s and 60s and everything, what was going on?
Well, in the 60s, it wasn't used as living space.
Okay, it was just like a storage thing or something.
I mean, I think in the 60s, it was probably very similar to what it was when we went in there. The roof was all caved in, there were a bunch of dead animals in there. If you recall, that's where all the dead animals were.
I mean, I was kind of just thinking, for the past 50 years, 60 years, it's been almost 60 years, three dwelling and to leave it as such.
Well, I agree that in 1967, it might have made a good idea to make it a three-family when there were no churches as my neighbors and it wasn't such a commercial area. But I don't think Browncroft Community Church stood as it is now in 1967.
No, it's a school.
Right. So I think that the community has, the neighborhood has become more commercial and I'm hoping that you would agree that it would not put a great burden on the neighborhood for a single individual to be able to live in that space. I'm hoping that you would agree to that, that I'm not excessively taxing the neighborhood by asking to be able to at least cover the costs of what I did, to do what I was asked, suggested that I do, influence to do, got building plans made to do.
Well, I mean, I kind of join Linda in some of her thoughts. You know, I mean, I go back to my comments that I made when we talked about this a few weeks ago, you know, as far as a constant, consistent with its use that it is today, the two or the three-family use for the building. And, you know, I stay true to that as far as my opinion on where we want to go moving in the future for this particular building. I was not expecting for, to talk about the white building and, you know, I appreciate, Mary, that you spent some energy and some money on that. I think that's a good thing, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, as of right now, I stay true to my initial comments back at that original meeting that we had a few weeks ago of staying consistent with the two to three, you know, two to three individual use of this particular home. So.
Okay. But did you, are you looking for any newer additional information that, based on what you've heard this evening?
No, no. There's possibilities you could utilize that for some storage or something for the people that live there, I don't know.
I'm not providing storage for the people who live there in that building. I don't want to be responsible in that way. That's not what I.
Right. But I don't know what to say. I stand by the two or three dwelling.
Then I will just configure the house in a different way so that it's three families. It has seven entrances. I mean, a kitchen creates a family. So I will have three full kitchens and I will configure the rooms in ways that connect the people who live there to the kitchen at your request.
Okay. So based on that, based on what, what we've heard, obviously it was for an approval or the ask was for an approval of 12 units, this board is looking to have it consistent with what it was in the 60s and then reconfirmed again in the 80s for up to three residents. And I would ask, is there a motion to move forward with that?
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? I think the discussion that the board will want to have are the, the conditions, you know, associated with that. And because of the sensitivity of this particular item, what I'd ask is that, that Mr. Costello prepare a resolution, those, those items that we want to see in there. Jim, is that we'll tie it back to what was approved back in 64 and again, reiterated again in 87. That would be for a three-family residence. We want to talk about appropriate permits associated with that, the appropriate inspections by the authorized officials and, you know, getting all of the follow-up paperwork associated with that. I ask that you draft up for the board's review because we'll be looking to bring this to the town board, next town board meeting, which would be next week. And so I'd ask that a draft be prepared with those conditions for the board to review because we don't have the entire board here. Certainly would like to have everybody take a look at that and we'll have that ready for submission at the next meeting.
Not a problem. I will take care of that for you. Some of the questions I have though is that, we went through a site plan review process, Mary went through a site plan review process that identified garages being constructed. There was a garage that she had there prior to all this starting, for a three-car garage. I assume you probably want a three-car garage again. Do you want that or more than three cars?
I actually, the contractor that built our house and so does had a really good idea to put everything behind the house in a way to have the three cars come off and then put three back there because whoever's living there, you're going to need at least, there's going to be, they're going to need garages. I mean, people have four-car garages now with one family, so. So I would like to be able to put garages and I would like the option to, you know, I don't know, I don't know what's going to happen, like how big the physical spaces are going to be. But I would like to be able to put garages.
So you will obviously definitely have the three-car garages prior to.
Yeah, and I think what I'd like to do is put three on the back side of that and nothing on the side. And then I don't have to worry about all this parking thing or this, you know.
So I think that that would probably just be a site plan review for the board.
So similar to what, similar to what we have done in other cases, Jim, that prior to any permit to be an issue for that, the board would have the opportunity to take a look at that. That would, that would give the applicant an opportunity to work with the architect, their architect or contractor to what that best layout would be. And then we would have the applicant come back to this board again as we have in previous applications for this board to finally, you know, sign off on that prior to the issue of some permit. And so that will be an additional item within that resolution.
And I know you did talk to Zach the other day, I was in here for the last few days.
He said that I would not have to do that.
Well, I think if you get a drawing just done of what you're thinking of for the, for the actual layout.
Yeah, he said that since I've already been approved, I should be able to do the modification through them.
Yes.
And I should not have to get approved again.
Well, they're not going to approve it, they're just going to look at it, see if it's, you know, how it's in keeping with what you're trying to accomplish on the site. But the planning board does grant the site plan approval you're writing.
And I would like to request, as Phil Damasala said, he has in the past been able to just do drawings of foundations and viability and not have to pay any more architectural fees because I've spent a significant amount of money on architectural fees that I have not been able to use. So I would like to just be able to.
Do you have a design that you're interested in using for the garages?
I, well, I, I would like to come off the house the way I did before and then my builders recommend you could come off.
So we're not going to, we're not going to design that, we're not going to design that tonight.
Right, right.
And what I'll say is, is that we have some minimum qualifications that are required for the building permits.
Exactly, and I want to meet that.
So you'll meet the minimum quals as anybody would, you know, for, for that.
Right.
And it sounds like you have an opportunity or a need to go back and do some, you know, additional layout work and what have you. This board would request that you come back so we can take a look at that and then meet the minimum quals for any permits that would be called as required by our code.
Right, exactly, exactly. Absolutely.
So it's been, it's been moved by Andy, seconded by Linda, that this would be a three-unit consistent with past subject to a number of conditions. Jim, you're going to prepare a draft for the board to take a look at based on conversations that were here this night, this evening?
Yes.
Any additional comments, board? Okay, then I'll ask for both those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so motion's carried and we'll move forward with a three-unit facility at that location. Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
We'll move on to our, we'll move on to our next item.
You shouldn't do one with this.
Yes, thank you.
The next, the next item is release of easement of property maintenance agreement that's at 1651B Five Mile Line Road. Mr. Costello?
Yes.
I would ask that you tee that up or further tee that up.
Yep. Around 2002, Lady Caidman has applied for site plan approval to develop a childcare center at the subject property at 1651B Five Mile Line Road. It was subdivided off from the R&amp;E property. She did receive subdivision of site plan approval. Conditions of subdivision of site plan approval were that she provide the town with a property maintenance agreement, as you do with all commercial development, and also a pond maintenance inspection easement. They are responsible for maintaining the pond. We inspect it to ensure that it's not creating impacts to people in the immediate area. Project was never built for one reason or another. All the documents were signed off by the applicant and recorded at the county clerk's office in addition to a hiking easement on the property, a sanitary easement and a storm easement. We are retaining the rights to those easements, we're not releasing those easements or requesting that you do that at any time in the future. We need those easements in place. But the two easements that we would like to release, which have no bearing on the property whatsoever. no bearing on the property whatsoever anymore, are the property maintenance agreements and the pond inspection easement, which doesn't exist.
Okay.
So with your permission, I'd like to prepare a resolution authorizing supervisor's side off on the release of easement and the release of property maintenance agreement, which are both recorded. And give that back to the property owners.
So moved.
Seconded. Okay, moved by Linda, seconded by Andy. Further discussion? You'll have that resolution in for our next, our next meeting?
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion and I'd ask for a roll call vote. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. So I guess it was a voice vote, portion of roll call, but my friend Lisa's got it figured out. Thank you for that. And that brings us to our third item. This is a carryover from our last meeting two weeks ago. We had Mr. Pitinaro that had come in and I understand that Mr. Pitinaro and his team met with our team to include Mr. Costello, some members of planning and engineering and highway, and they had come to what they believe is the most appropriate for the site, not impacting or extending the town dedicated road, but doing something more in keeping with a driveway concept versus a road concept, so.
We're basically employing the La Fountain design, which was not at the last meeting.
Right, that was up here, right.
We went out to the site, we identified the location for him. We are identifying the, at the beginning of that point to be fifteen feet away from those trees, which is the drip line of the tree. We don't want the root systems cut so they don't lose the trees. He has agreed to that and we will be doing a stakeout to ensure there's no utilities in that location. We will be doing the staking to identify where the specific cut is going to take place and he is working with the highway department to obtain a permit and he will do the work to the gutter as per town specifications.
So his permit is to tie into our current road, Motts Lane dedicated road, so consistent with any, anyone putting in a driveway and house business, et cetera.
That's right.
Okay. Is there any consideration or need for either a bond, post a bond or letter of credit or certified check?
I think we will ask a letter of credit to ensure that everything's tied in.
So tied in a problem, yeah. Okay. So what entertained motion to approve this alternate location is shown on a map that Jim had handed out from Mr. Pitinaro at, on Penfield, a little beyond to Motts Lane, but the property's address is on Penfield Road.
I move that. Will you approve a little? It's designed on this piece of paper and dealt with the staff and the engineers.
I will second Supervisor La Fountain's landscape design efforts. Graded as outstanding.
Thank you, sir.
There will be an updated plan that is being done by Costage.
Costage.
Right.
Just to give you an idea, we went with the La Fountain plan, yes.
I think the La Fountain plan will be better.
I agree.
Okay. So moved by Linda, seconded by Andy to install that onto, and it certainly will make it safer for some of his customers that want to especially exit westbound. They can go up and around and come out on the lights. So the move and seconded, further discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that takes us to the end of our agenda this evening and there being no further business before the August eighth, two thousand and eighteen work session agenda. Meeting will stand adjourned at seven thirty-five PM. Thank you to staff, thank you to the audience that participated and thank you to PC TV.